Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The clock on the wall now matches my icon, so it's six o'clock. And we'll call the meeting to order. And the first order of business is to have our invocation, members' invocation by Rodney Ward, pastor of the Harless Memorial United Methodist Church.
Thank you.
Stand, please.
As pastor of the Harless United Methodist Church, I want to give you all a thanks for allowing us to come and open this meeting in a Christian prayer. And just as a reminder, this past Sunday was a special Sunday. It's a Sunday that the Holy Ghost was given to us by Christ, as known as Pentecost Sunday. Heavenly Father, thank you for an advocate given by Christ to help us discern the truth. Lord, I lift up the staff for their mission to the city, reading from First Timothy 2:2, "For all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all good, godliness, and honesty." As the leaders of Denison, we pray they are able to discern the truth and provide the citizens with what is needed to allow them a safe and beneficial place to live. We know there are a lot of tough decisions to be made, and we ask your assistance in their lives to help with this task. Remembering Noah, God may ask you to do what is foolish in the eyes of the world. As those selected by the residents of Denison, they have entrusted you with the authority to be their hands and feet and decision-makers in overseeing the growth of this fabulous community. Lord, may your Spirit be with these men and women, not only while in this facility, but in all their life, to paraphrase Psalm 78:72. "And the city council of Denison shepherd the people of Denison with integrity of heart and with skillful hands." May the Lord bless you all, in Jesus' name, with the power of the Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
And for our Pledge of Allegiance, we have members of the Texoma Women's Roller Derby, and that's Cheyenne Garcia, Kathy Tyneam, Brianna Rowland, and I was going to ask you about your name. Rowland?
Yes.
Roller derby, okay. And then my favorite friend, Lindsay Manley, nice to see you tonight. And so if you ladies would come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, we'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, nice to see you tonight. Thank you very much, ladies. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation for mental health awareness, and I would invite Dr. Jeremy McMillan and Chief Gudjel to come forward.
Now, our proclamation reads, "Whereas mental health is an essential part of overall well-being, impacting individuals, families, and communities across Denison, Texas; and whereas one in five American adults experiences a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health; and whereas despite its prevalence, mental health is becoming a shroud and stigma, preventing many, many from seeking help; and whereas early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life; and whereas many is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat stigma, and promote mental health resources. Now therefore, I brought Carl here at Denison, Texas, to hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 to be Mental Health Awareness Month, and the City of Denison, and urge all citizens to educate themselves and others about mental health conditions, treatment options, and available resources. Challenge stigma by speaking respectfully and inclusively about mental health. Seek help if they are struggling in their mental health, and encourage others to do the same. Support organizations that provide mental health services and advocacy, and create safe and supportive environments for open conversations about mental health. Together, we can create a community where everyone feels empowered to prioritize their mental wellness being and seek help when needed." Gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight.
Nice to see you, sir. And thank you, Carl. Appreciate it.
You mind if I address the councilman, please? So I want to share the appreciation of the Behavioral Health Leadership Team for the support of the city. Chief Gudjel has been on the Behavioral Health Leadership Team since a few years ago, is when I think I asked you, I'm not sure about that. I'm the chair of that, and we also have members of the Texoma Community Center that serve our community, our local mental health authority. They do a fantastic job. TBHLT was established, I think, seven or eight years ago to focus on reducing stigma, increasing access to care, providing jail diversion, which is a huge impact on the City of Denison. I believe, Chief, you could speak to that if you wanted to, but taking someone that has behavioral health challenges and providing them with services as opposed to just placing them in jail, and then recently trying to expand the mental health workforce, so we have true access to care within our community. You heard some facts earlier, but I want to share some things about Texas and the prevalence of mental health and also our community. Texas is the number one in the United States with the highest prevalence of mental health needs. We have the lowest access to care. Grayson County experiences 13% higher poor mental health days than the U.S. average. This one's tough. Suicide rates in Texoma have increased 38% since the year 2000. And then also, we know that generational poverty heightens stress and restricts access to resources, with 11% of that being experienced in Grayson County. You know the data for the City of Denison. So the things you do at this council help us in a lot of ways to meet the needs of our community, to create a community where they do have access to care, and I'm really grateful for that. So thank you for supporting that.
Thank you very much for being here, gentlemen. Appreciate it very much. Next item on the agenda, public comments. Citizens may speak on items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to the city clerk upon arrival and prior to the council reaching the public comment section of the agenda. Citizen comments are limited three minutes unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to public hearings listed below will be heard when the specific hearing starts. Do we have any cars yet? No cars to speak? Okay, thank you. Next item, number four, the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So now we're down to the public hearings, and I'd like to invite Ms. York to come forward and tell us about the hearings.
Okay. Would you like me to read the item, or can I just go ahead? Okay. Item, this is item, I believe, four, four A? Five A, sorry. It's four A, Planning and Zoning Commission, but it's five A here. This is receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance for a conditional use permit for a tract of land legally described as being a part of the Collins AR First Edition, Block Four, Lot 12, being approximately 0.1722 acres, being commonly known as 517 West Hole Street, GCAD property ID number 145804, to allow for an accessory dwelling unit within the two-family 2F duplex residential district, case number 2024-018CUP. This is a site plan, excuse me, okay. This is the site plan that was provided by the applicant of the existing structures located at 517 West Hole Street. The applicant is pursuing or seeking approval of the conditional use permit in order to allow the operations of an ADU at that property in the back or an accessory dwelling unit. Per the Section 28.49 of the Use Regulation Chart located in the zoning ordinance, an accessory dwelling unit or an ADU is allowed within the 2F zoning district with an approved conditional use permit. And the applicant states within their project narrative that they wish to remodel the space that I just pointed out, that structure that's located at the back of the property, or I'm sorry, remodel the space above an existing two-car garage, which is that structure I just mentioned, into an ADU. They will remodel, or the remodel will include the construction of a small kitchen, the addition of a shower to an existing bathroom, and the construction of a bedroom. And the applicant also stated within their project narrative that they have completed a minor remodel of the interior of the main structure, which you see at the front of the property. And the applicant is proposing to provide parking for the residents of both the ADU and the existing, or the main structure, by way of the garage for the residents of the ADU and the driveway that you see just to the right of that main structure for the residents that inhabit the main structure. Excuse me. Due to the rising cost of housing, ADUs have become a popular option for generating extra income or for finding an affordable housing unit. While the zoning district supports the use of an accessory dwelling unit, staff has concerns about the lack of information for the potential remodels for both the ADU and the existing structure. The 500 block of Hole Street has seen significant new development and redevelopment with five new single-family homes being built, as well as some homes that have been remodeled. Given this, staff recommends that a condition be placed on the approval, requiring the applicant submit a full scope of what is to be remodeled to the existing structure, or the main structure, I should say, as well as the ADU, to ensure the quality product is consistent with the neighborhood. I will say that with the addition of the kitchen and the bathroom, the applicant, upon approval of the conditional use permit, will most likely have to pull a building permit. There were just some concerns about what's, if there is any remodeling done to the existing structure, and without that being provided within the project narrative, we just want to make sure that it's consistent with how the block currently looks. The subject property has been provided the designation of neighborhood per the future land use plan, and per the comprehensive plan, these areas should be developed by way of many residential types, not limited to, but including single-family, detached townhomes, duplexes, and accessory dwelling units. For this reason, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the condition that a full scope of the remodel for both the main structure and the ADU be provided to staff, and the planning and zoning condition recommended approval at their meeting held on, I've been gone for a week, it was last Tuesday, but they did recommend approval. I'm present for any questions you may have, and I am not sure, the applicant is here, if you have any questions with them as well.
All right. Any questions from council?
Is this property owner occupied?
No, sir. It was stated within the project narrative that they intend to remodel both structures and then sell the property.
Will it require two separate bills for each dwelling? Water bill?
So we lack some standards for accessory dwelling units within our ordinance, and so there is not a requirement. They do have separate electrical meters, that's a requirement of Encore, so no, that is not a requirement. They will be billed at two units for water, sewer, and refuse, though, within the utility billing office.
Third question. Trash.
They'll have their own recycling cart, trash cart as well. Yep.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this agenda item? If not, then we'll close the public hearing. Questions, any other questions or discussion from council? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the conditional use permit to allow for an accessory dwelling unit within the two-family 2F duplex residential district for property located at 517 West Hole Street, with the condition that a remodel scope be provided to staff for both ADU and the primary structure.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. And then the next item is for another public hearing. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance, on an ordinance annexing 2.539 acres legally described as GCAD property ID number 436967, being part of the MC Davis survey abstract number 336, covered to, conveyed to Citrus Equities LLC by deed recorded in document number 2021-22302, official public records, Grayson County, property located west of the property, commonly known as 3621 Potsboro Road, for the expansion of a warehouse, mini warehouse for self-storage facility. This is case number 2024-027A.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Diane?
Next item I have for you is a request, a voluntary annexation petition, to bring the subject property that you see here on the aerial map, consisting of 2.539 acres into the Denison city limits. And the applicant is requesting annexation of the subject property in order to expand their current operations of a warehouse mini self-storage facility known as Five Star Storage. That's the buildings that you see just kind of to the east of what is outlined there. Along with the voluntary annexation petition, the applicant has submitted a zoning application requesting the initial zoning of commercial for the subject property, as well as an application to amend an active conditional use permit for, allowing for the use of warehouse mini self-storage facility. Both of these requests are companion items on this agenda. The future land use plan designates this area to be developed in a mixed-commercial manner. An approval of the annexation for the use of warehouse mini self-storage complies with this designation. I am present for any ques, well, staff does recommend approval, I'm sorry, and then I'm present for any questions you may have.
This is a public hearing. Before we open that, council, any questions of Ms. York? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this agenda item? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from council? We'll call for a motion?
I move to adopt the ordinance annexing the subject property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to annex this property. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Item C. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance to initially zone approximately 2.539 acres legally described as GCAD property number 436967, being a part of the MC Davis survey abstract number 336, conveyed to Citrus Equities LLC by deed recorded in document number 2021-22302, official public records, Grayson County, being located west of the property, commonly known as 3621 Potsboro Road, to the commercial district C, district to allow for the use of a warehouse, mini warehouse storage facility, case number 2024-027A. Ms. York?
Here we are again. Thank you, sir. Now that we've annexed the subject property, we need to zone it. The applicant is requesting the initial zoning of a commercial zoning district for the subject property. The adjacent property where Five Star Storage currently is in operation is also zoned commercial. As I mentioned before, along with the zoning application, the applicant has submitted a conditional use, conditional use permit application to amend the active CUP that is for the operations of the mini warehouse facility known as Five Star Storage. And as I stated previously, the future land use plan designates this area to be developed in a mixed-commercial manner, initially zoning the subject property to commercial, complies with the future land use plan. For this reason, staff recommends approval of the request, as did the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm going to give you a date this time, held on May 14th. I'm present for any questions you may have, and so is the applicant.
Any questions, council? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this, on this agenda item? If not, we will close the public hearing. Any further discussion from council? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve initially zoning the subject property to the commercial zoning district.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Adams and seconded by Reverend Thorne. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. And Ms. York gets to come again for item C. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance to initially zone approximately 2.539 acres legally described.
One more.
Okay, sorry. All right. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance to amend the conditional use permit, allowing the use of a warehouse, mini store, self, self-storage facility, to include a tract of land legally described as part of the MC Davis survey abstract number 336, and being all of an approximately 2.539 acre tract of land conveyed to Citrus Equities by deed recorded in document number 2021-22302, official public records, Grayson County, located west of the property, commonly known as 3621 Potsboro Road, GCAD property number 436967, case number 2024-033CUP. Ms. York?
Thank you, sir. One more time. The applicant, in addition to the voluntary annexation petition, the initial zoning request, they have submitted a conditional use permit application to amend an active CUP for the operation of Five Star Storage, which is a warehouse mini self-storage facility. The existing conditional use permit was approved by city council on May 5th, 2021, and the applicant, the applicant, excuse me, wishes to expand their operations by including the 2.539 acres that were annexed this evening. The additional acreage will allow for the applicant to construct storage units to include personal storage, business storage, temperature-controlled storage, as well as RV, boat, and car storage. As I mentioned previously, per the future land use plan, the subject property is designated to be developed in a mixed-commercial manner. The use of warehouse mini self-storage complies with this designation. Staff does not have any additional conditions to place on this, or within this permit, as this is just to include the acreage. All other conditions that were listed in the previous conditional use permit will apply. Staff recommends approval of the request, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request at their meeting held on May 14th. And I'm present for any questions you may have, and so is the applicant.
Any questions from council? If not, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this agenda item? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any other questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve amending the conditional use permit for Five Star Storage to allow the additional 2.539 acres.
I second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Thomas, a second by Councilman Redwine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And if there was an item E, I was just getting everything memorized. We'll go to item number six now. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an amendment to the construction manager at risk contract with Archer Western for the Northwest Denison Development Utilities and the Ryland Water Treatment Plant Expansion Phase Two for a guaranteed maximum price of $89,584,203, and authorize the interim city manager to execute all related documents. Mr. Bates?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sorry about that. The city, city council awarded the construction C Mar contract to, for the Northwest Denison Development Project and the Ryland Plant Expansion in November of '23 to Archer Western. We're here tonight to add the amendment of the GMP guaranteed maximum price and ask for council approval on this multi-year project. The GMP that is presented by the C Mar contractor, Archer Western, is for $89,584,203. This price is the total price for both projects. The GMP is within the projected budget of both projects, and funding will be available in the utility CIP funds. The following is a breakdown of the two projects. Approximately $82,171, or $82,171,203 is for the construction of approximately 23,000 linear feet of 24-inch water line, 27,000 linear feet of 36-inch wastewater line, a sanitary sewer trucking receiving station, fiber optics, cabling, a lift station, and dual force mains. The second one, the approximate $7,413,000 is for Phase Two of the Ryland Water Treatment Plant Expansion, which includes procurement, I need to move this slide. Which includes the procurement and installation of two standalone microfiltration skids, which is on the picture there on the screen, which will add an additional 4 million gallons of treatment capacity at the plant. The city plumber engineering, along with our C Mar contractor, Archer Western, have developed this detailed plan to expand the utility service, to expand utility service to all Denison's northwest quadrant, which includes Preston Harbor, and it will help us meet our contract requirements for Preston Harbor, and it will also increase the treatment capacity at Ryland Water Treatment Plant for Denison's continued growth. Our team is here for any further questions. We have Jason and Andy with Archer Western, and we've got Zach and Alan Tucker with Plumber Associates, and then Public Works team is here as well. Any questions?
Roughly, how many years will this project take?
The way we're designing projects now is a plug-and-play type process, and so we can speed it up or slow it down, depending on the, you know, how the sales go with houses and how fast the developer moves. So this could be, if they go fast, it'd be up to four years. If it goes slower, it could be eight to nine years.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bates. Get back over here to the correct page. We, no other questions? Is, this item is for individual consideration? Is there a motion to approve this item?
Mayor, I move to approve the amendment to the construction manager at risk contract with Archer Western for the Northwest Denison Development Utilities and Ryland Water Plant Treatment Plant Expansion Phase Two for a guaranteed maximum price of $89,584,203, and authorize the interim city manager to execute all related documents.
Second.
The motion by Dr. Courtwright, a second by Reverend Thorne. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, now we have item number seven, a project update. Ms. Reiner? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and good evening. The City of Denison has a funding agreement that, with the Denison Arts Council, that states that 14% of our collected hotel occupancy taxes go to the Denison Arts Council specifically for the use of arts promotion and attracting overnight stays for arts tourism. And as part of that, we get a budget update from our Denison Arts Council president. I've had the pleasure of tourism manager, working with the Denison Arts Council, and I think they've done really fantastic things just in the last year. I'm sure you've seen the growth in all of the art that they've produced, and I've had a pleasure working with them. So I'd like to introduce President of the Arts Council, Cindy Salem, to give us more of an update on this. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
That was a good sign. Hello, and thank you for having us tonight. This is an update from our fiscal year, which started in April, I mean, sorry, not in October, and it'll go through April. So it's about a seven-month report. As Rachel said, we have a 14%, it comes to us monthly. Rachel does a great job of executing that. And in addition, this year, when we started our fiscal year, we had a pretty substantial carryover, and I'll explain that. It wasn't our intention to do that. We've kind of been whittling it down. We started with with that as my current group a couple of years ago. We had sixty-eight thousand dollars in the grant account. The budgeted amount coming forward is eighty-nine thousand dollars, and we're current today, and we received about fifty-six thousand dollars. We're running about eight percent over what the budget is. So, first, let me explain that carryover, because it's pretty substantial. It wasn't intentional, but there are reasons for it. First of all, our biggest event is the Fall Festival, and that festival, we budgeted about forty thousand dollars. Well, with the festival being November second, we have all, all the carryover, all the payables that are gonna come up in October and November, and so, we needed to have that money in there. And that will happen again this year. We'll need to carry over between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars of our budget. We knew we had a lot of money, so we put extra money toward some of the performers, but substantial amount of money towards our marketing. And I'll show you some numbers later about the people we actually drew into the community doing the Dia de los Muertos Festival. The second thing we did was, we put ten thousand dollars toward the public art installation. Remember from years before, we had the color condition? What we did this year is, we put out a bid throughout the state of Texas. We got almost ten artists, most of them not from Dennison, that put in for us. That excited us, being able to kind of reach out to these other artists. Unfortunately, most of them just kind of wanted to paint a painting, paint a canvas and stick it on the back of the park, which we didn't think was such a great idea. And our own homegrown casting studio, without a doubt, came out with the best. And so, they received ten thousand dollars to do a very large installation that was here for four different festivals in town. And the next thing we did was, we, we support the public art, so we gave forty-two hundred dollars towards one of the murals in town. We have a grant process where applicants can then ask for money, let us know what their budget is, they need to know what mural is, and all of those are also approved through the design committee, so we work closely with them. Something we were able to add this year, again, because we knew we had the carryover, is that the Laughton Home Tour, which is many, many years now, and we all know it brings in a lot of people, really didn't have an advertising budget. So, I spoke with the event organizers and asked if we could do a reach-out, and our, our donut that we try to go towards is between two hundred and fifty and three hundred mile circle, but not the fifty-ish miles around Dennison. So, we did some very specific geo-advertising in order to support that. And then, we also gave them TV and radio advertising, which they'd never had. It resulted in a huge number of people coming to that particular event, so it was very exciting to be able to support that, very specific to our goal of bringing people in. We also were able to purchase pages in the Lake Tech Summer Visitors Guide, and then, we gave a performing art grant to the Performing Arts and Jazz Festival. This is our actual budget for this year, you've got it in front of you. The key items with a budget, and this is all per the tax code, these are permitted expenses. Another one is the Fall Festival, as I said. Now, that fourteen thousand dollars is executing the festival, our Spring Festival, six thousand dollars, and the Cultural Arts District advertising, and we put everything in that. So, we have so many things that run month to month. We work closely with Rachel on doing the ads like Texas Monthly, creating videos that we can all use. But another thing with advertising is, it was, we could see in our numbers that our media was not going outside our county. We had not really hit our goals. So, we went and did a lot of extra work on our website design, our social media campaigns, and what actually works to bring people in outside tourism, visitor guides, Texas Monthly, that kind of thing. And then, finally, public art, as we all know, and we should all be very proud, compared to most cities, we have extraordinary public art. There we go. These are the three festivals, and here's some numbers. November third was the Fall Festival. Place Ray I fortunately does give us some numbers, and we had over ten thousand people that came to that festival. But what was really fun is over forty percent of them were outside the Grayson County area. So, being able to actually see those numbers was pretty exciting. Another one was the North Texas Art Festival. Now, that was spring, but I'm gonna throw that out here. Again, we had almost ten thousand people in the community. Now, I gotta be fair, the soccer thing was going on downtown, had an event, kind of hard to tell who came to our two-block event, but, ten thousand people. And again, over forty percent from outside our, our cities in our specific area. And finally, that hung in Laughton, where again, this was, this matched any attendance they'd had before, and they showed that over sixty percent came from outside Grayson County. So, very, very proud of those numbers and the cooperation and collaboration between all these people that work together. This is just our new website, we've been working on it a couple of years, updating colors, making the reach. We've also made all the cultural arts programs, so we can plug in, we try to link into everything going on in the city, in particular, what Discover Dennison is doing, and how people can see what's going on in town, and very quickly figure out if they want to stay in a hotel here, or, or an Airbnb, or all the many, many access places they can stay. Website views are up, users are up. The organic search for Dennison Arts Council is up by over six hundred percent. And that really shows us where that, our advertising dollars are going toward people understanding, hey, there really is something going on up here, because our goal is people go, hey, I want to do an art weekend, I don't have to go to Fredericksburg, or, I don't have to go to Bernie, or I don't have to go to Fort Worth, they're gonna come up here to Dennison. And then, our Facebook followers are up. Our social media, we're also, there's things I do not understand about social media, I'm a grandma, that's my main job there, but, what, the people that know what they're doing there is, we are doing a good job hitting our metrics in both Instagram, which was not very well populated in the past, and our social media with Facebook. This is our board. So, again, I thank you guys very much for trusting us with that money, and our intent is to spend it well and to continue to bring people up to Dennison. Any questions?
I think you've done a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yeah, it's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. At this time, I don't think we have any reason to do an executive session, so, without too many major gaps in my first meeting, it's six thirty-six. If I can mind this.